Good morning, everyone. I am calling to order our regularly scheduled meeting of the Committee of the Whole. My name is Elizabeth Glidden. I'm the Chair of this committee, and I'm joined today by Councilmembers Gordon, Reich, Bender, Andrew Johnson, Yang, Worsami, Goodman, Frye, and Palmasano. We are a quorum of the committee able to do the business of today. So today, our main item of business is a big one, but that may be a little bit deceptive because I think a lot of the changes that we are talking about are going to be technical in nature. This is a follow-up of our responsibility to review once the Plain Language Charter revisions were approved by the voters. And at the beginning of this year, we then had the responsibility to review our ordinances and ensure that they were in accordance with the charter. So I am going to turn this over to Mr. Ginder to take us through these—why we are here today, what are the nature of the work that has happened, and then we will open the public hearing. I'm not seeing many people in here for the public hearing, which again, I will say is not surprising due to the somewhat technical nature. But before Mr. Ginder starts, I just want to say this was an enormous task taken on primarily by the City Attorney's Office. I think there was a lot of coordination work that happened with departments to ensure that we were just very carefully reviewing this charter and ensuring that the city would be able to keep on working and frankly, that we would not notice the difference, hopefully. So, Mr. Ginder.
Thank you, Vice President Glidden. As was indicated, in 2013, the voters of the city passed a new Plain Language Charter. And when that charter work was done, as you recall, a lot of the language from the current charter disappeared. The Charter Commission had put together a side-by-side comparison of the charter—what I could still call our current charter—with the Plain Language Charter. And that side-by-side comparison reflected what, in their opinion, language was captured in the new charter. And for a lot of the language that was not captured in the new charter, they had made recommendations that it be reviewed for possible inclusion into ordinance. And that's one of the attachments that you're linked to. And so what we did within—in the office, and there was a team of approximately eight or nine of us that sat down to go through this, starting at the beginning of the year. And there's a layout of the comparison of the charter, and then for each section of the charter, which the Charter Commission thought should be reviewed for possible inclusion in the language, we did that review. And then created some new columns on that that said what the result of our review was. For example, if we thought it was necessary to put it into charter, we indicated that and where it was going—excuse me, if we thought it was necessary to go into the ordinance, where it would go. And if we thought it was not necessary to go into ordinance, we indicated that and we said why it would not go into ordinance. This team met monthly, beginning approximately March of this year. And then, as we went through that, tried to talk about it as a group. And then each of us also went out and talked to particular departments about what their viewpoint and what was necessary to be achieved by transferring these, if necessary, into the ordinance. When we focused on the review, we were looking at whether the language was obsolete, whether it was necessary to put it into ordinance, whether it was captured someplace else already in ordinance, whether it was captured someplace else in state law, whether general law or special law applicable to the city, or if there are other relevant rules or standards that captured it. We did not want to just generically move items from the charter into the ordinance unless we felt it was necessary. We also tried to make these decisions non-controversial, rather technical in nature. And so, in many of the cases, the language is simply taken almost verbatim from the charter and put in the ordinance. Sometimes it's modernized to account for current language or current practices in the department. But we tried to keep it as non-substantive or non-material as we could, subject to a couple of changes that we'll talk about later on. As an example, some of the changes are very minor. There were references in the ordinances that we captured to the current charter, so it would say referencing Charter Chapter 12, Section 7. With the new Plain Language Charter, that disappeared, or it was put into different areas of the charter. So we just changed those references to make a more generic reference, either to the charter or just removed it if we didn't feel it was necessary. If you go through this, you'll see in certain areas that there's a large body of language that was taken directly from the charter and put into ordinance. Those were in areas that we felt it was the most necessary and where those areas were the most complicated. For example, special assessment procedure. Under state law, we're allowed to do that either by state law or through our charter and our ordinances. City typically does most of its special assessments through its charter and ordinances. So we felt it was important to transfer that language pretty much as it existed wholesale into the ordinance. So that, you'll see, is a significant amount of the added language to the ordinance is simply the transfer of that language. It really didn't change, but we felt it was important to keep that language as we go forward with our special assessments. Similarly, you'll see a lot of language that was transferred with regard to public works, about sewer and water systems, and laying of streets. And we felt that it was best to just take that language and move that into ordinance. And so that's a large—it looks like a lot of language, but it just simply replicates what's already in the charter. To a lesser degrees, we did that with other items. So for example, we reviewed—there was a lot of language with regard to the Finance Department. And for example, I sat down with the Finance Department four or five times as we walked through all the various issues with finance to determine, was it necessary to put it into ordinance? Was it captured someplace else? Is it accounted for, for example, today in just generally accepted accounting principles? And a lot of this language, as you may be aware, is from literally back to the 1920s or even earlier in 1880s. So some of it is a little bit obsolete. And so there were decisions made on what language was necessary to carry over or not. And that's what we did, is we went through this. When you read the subject introduction on the RCA, I tried to highlight what we were doing as far as capturing that language and—those areas that were most important. And so, for example, there were minor changes made in the Police Department language in the ordinance where we just carried over some language about the council has the ability to control the grounds and the monies and the expenditures for the Police Department, which was a direct carryover from the charter. So that kind of language, what we thought was just necessary to bring in to accommodate for the way we continue to operate, we did that. Otherwise, we looked at it, and if you look through that attached document, we give a reason for everything that was not transferred over into ordinance. That is the summary of this. Much like the Plain Language Charter itself, we know that there will be revisions or ongoing review of this. We will find out if we made a mistake in this, or if there's some language that, when a situation comes up, that we didn't contemplate, or we might have to come back and say, you know what, we do need to put some more language into ordinance. As we went through this, we also, for example, noted in the Plain Language Charter that we will go back to the Charter Commission this year and make some recommendations for what we think are non-substantive changes. But errors that we've caught, or one example is when we changed the Plain Language Charter, they put in a date for the tax levy processes, the truth in taxation, and they put a date in for that, which was in accordance with state law at the time we passed the charter. But in 2013, the legislature changed that, so now that date in the charter is already outmoded. So we would go back and make a recommendation to them that they not make a reference to a specific date. Similarly, we caught something about vacancy in office, where if a vacancy occurs on one particular day, it's not covered by the charter. So we would have to go back and clarify some of that stuff. So we fully anticipate this will be an ongoing process as we go through our daily business that we'll be called to look at this and say, oh, you know what, we didn't anticipate this, and we may come back and ask for additional ordinance introduction.
Thank you, Mr. Ginder. And I'll just—I'm looking to see if there are informational questions from councilmembers. I'm not seeing any. I did want to, maybe before the public hearing, just so we have kind of clarity of the information before us, give a heads up. There are—these are attached to your agenda. They are framed as motions, although I'm not sure why I would need to make a motion. I think I would just substitute what is the—because I haven't moved the underlying action. But there were two replacements to the original drafted ordinances, and the original drafted ordinances have been linked to our agendas for several meetings. So I think we wanted to just have clarity to both the policymakers who are going to vote on this, as well as the public, of the changes. And I might just note these two changes, and then Mr. Ginder can kind of help me a little bit here. One is relating to the proposed ordinance amendment to—it's Title II, Chapter 17, which is the Finance Chapter, Finance Department. What the change was there, and on the actual ordinance, you can see the new language in red. So there's the old language, which is crossed out, there is—or just as is—there is new language, which was in these ordinances as attached online for several meetings, underlined. The new language as of today is in red. This new language relates actually to—well, the new language says the City Council should delegate by resolution the power to make and execute contracts on behalf of the city to certain persons or to certain position titles within the city. The delegated authority to make and execute contracts on behalf of the city shall only be for contracts of a limited dollar amount and a limited term as approved by the City Council. All contracts made under the authority of this section shall be in a written form approved by the city attorney. And why was this change proposed?
Vice President Glidden, that was changed because there was basically kind of an oversight. We had several people working this. We each thought we'd kind of captured it. And the red language is verbatim from the current charter. That was the language that authorized these non-standard contracts not necessarily have to come to the council. And what we had done is we'd covered it to some degree, but not the specificity that we needed. And so that was caught after we'd put this together, as we—other reviewers looked at this, and so that's why that was added back in there. Again, that just reflects what's currently in the charter.
Okay. The second item I'm going to mention, this relates to a substitute, which is to Title II, Chapter 18, and this relates to Administration, Purchasing Department. This is actually more of an item I just think of interest and note perhaps to councilmembers. And it relates to language in the charter that has said that contracts are not to be awarded to persons or entities in default. And there was some language that has now been crossed out, that had been proposed. And so you can see the red section shows there was an original kind of longer version of this that's now being crossed out. And I think the issue there was that we wanted to be very careful just to make the changes that were necessary based on the Plain Language Charter. However, there are a lot of issues that are raised by this particular provision. What we have decided to do, as Mr. Ginder has helped draft a staff direction—that I'll make at the same time I make the motion—that directs appropriate city staff from Finance, the City Attorney's Office, and CPED to review and study the prohibition against awarding of contracts to persons or entities in default, and report back on the implications of expanding the definition of persons or entities who are in default in contracts with the city. So again, this is just going to allow us to have that more substantive discussion of what really should be in the ordinance, what do we want to capture, what is going too far, or what is really doing what we want to do. This has been a longstanding item in the charter, so I think that's how we've decided to handle it. I'm not—still not seeing any questions from councilmembers. So we do have a public hearing. I'm going to open the public hearing and see if anybody would like to testify regarding the Plain Language Charter revisions. I'm not seeing anyone come forward. And again, not really surprising, although I will say I'm surprised almost that we don't have a—remember the Charter Commission here? I know they've been following this very closely as well, but I guess we are now in the handoff period to strictly city business. So I'm going to close the public hearing. And I think since we have gone through all these items, I'm just going to go ahead and move the ordinances, including these two substitutes that I have already described quite fully, and then I will move the staff direction separately. So discussion on the motion. Seeing none, all in approval, please say aye. Aye. Opposed. That item has been approved. And next, the staff direction. Any questions? Discussion on the staff direction. Seeing none, all in approval, please say aye. Aye. Opposed. And that item has been concluded. And so again, thank you very much to Mr. Ginder, but really, a team, large team, of great staff from the City Attorney's Office, working together with departments to carefully go through this. And I just thank you so, so very much. This has been a very big job. So, thank you. With that, this was the one item of business on the Committee of the Whole, and we now turn to committee reports with Community Development and Regulatory Services. Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. There are 24 items on our agenda for approval tomorrow. Please bear with me, I'll go through most of them. Some of them are fairly substantial. Item number one is an ordinance change for temporary extended hours of operation license. This is to allow for up to 30-some-odd days of businesses to be able to remain open for a variety of reasons, of which they don't need to tell us what their reason is. This does not include downtown. Downtown already can do that. Item number two is a change that would allow the city to do administrative hearings for business licenses. So instead of having to go to a larger state process, our group of people who do administrative hearings would also handle business licenses. They currently handle rental licenses, as an example. Item number three is approval of a tax-exempt bond issue for Catholic elder care, and the same for item number four, for the Tubman Center. Item five is a revocation of a rental dwelling license. Six is the usual or regular liquor gambling and business licenses. Item seven is a business license operating agreement for Twin Town Pettycabs. Item eight is a reinstatement of a license, as is number nine. Items 10 and 11 are renewal of rental license with conditions. Item 12 is the property management contract approval. This is to allow for a panel of organizations, nonprofits, and for-profits to basically maintain CPED-owned properties. There's going to be an amendment passed out tomorrow on this issue exempting one of them from the city's living wage ordinance. And I thought there might be some questions about that, so I just want to explain that right now. That is for the number-one-ranked group, Hennepin County Sentenced to Serve. To be exempt from the living wage ordinance, as soon as you realize that Hennepin County sentenced for serve, crews are not paid, you would realize why they would have to be exempt from the living wage ordinance. But it was the number-one-ranked group working on these properties, and we're very excited about it, in fact, that they would be working with us on maintaining city properties. And then there's a list of five others, including the Tree Trust, which is a nonprofit, which would already be exempt, and other for-profit organizations that would not be exempt. Item number 13 is an agreement on heading home Hennepin and the Office to End Homelessness. Item 14 is just giving our approval for local Met Council Livable Community Awards. Item 15 is TOD grant applications. Item 16 is the interim management agreement for the Upper Harbor Terminal. Item 17 is a series of actions, hopefully the final actions, on Broadway Flats, including their tax-exempt housing revenue bonds, the redevelopment agreement, and the TIF deal. Item eight is the Convention Center Hotel Parking Ramp Lease. Item 19 is the Broadway Flats TIF Deal. Item 20 is making a modification to the 50th and France TIF Plan. Item 21 is our carryforward for our housing entitlement revenue bonds. Item 22 is decertifying two tax increment districts and one hazardous substance district. Item 13 is a change in our NSP contract. It's really putting more money, $600,000, into NSP properties on the North Side. And item 24 is expanding the contract with the Chandler Group to have them continue to work on trying to find us a housing director. With that, I'm happy to answer questions on items 1 through 24.
Thank you, Councilmember Goodman. Health, Environment, and Community Engagement, Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you very much, Madam Vice President. The Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Committee is bringing four items forward for approval. The first is passions of an ordinance amending Title 11, Chapter 234. This is the—has to do with the Minneapolis Code related to health and sanitation, indoor smoking, and it would be to adopt the Minnesota Clean Indoor Act and broaden the regulation of electronic cigarettes and electronic delivery devices. The second item is staff direction to Neighborhood and Community Relations, asking staff to engage neighborhood associations and the Neighborhood and Community Engagement Commission in developing policy and procedure recommendations for the council to establish guidelines for allowing balances of unspent N or P fund allocations and require any neighborhood associations not meeting those guidelines to develop a plan. Item three is directing Neighborhood and Community Relations staff to work with the Engagement Commission to develop recommendations for future expenditures of the consolidated TIF Fund for neighborhood revitalization purposes. And the fourth item is authorizing negotiation and execution of a contract with Wilder Research to develop and conduct the 2015 and 2017 Minneapolis resident surveys. Happy to answer any questions.
All right. Thank you, Councilmember Gordon. We will now do elections and rules with Councilmember Frye.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We had one item on the agenda, which was the resolution approving the 2015 revision of council rules. Be happy to answer any questions.
All right. Is Councilmember Yang coming back? Maybe I will—
I can do that.
Yep, okay. Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management with Councilmember Gordon as the vice chair.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Yang had to go for a settlement conference, so he asked me to give the report. The Public Safety, Civil Rights, and Emergency Management Committee are bringing forward five items for consideration tomorrow. The first is the appointments to the Minneapolis Civil Rights Commission and the Police Conduct Oversight Commission and Police Conduct Review Panel. This would be confirming mayoral appointments to the Minneapolis Commission on Civil Rights and the council and mayoral appointments to the Police Conduct Oversight Commission, and also confirming the appointments to the Police Conduct Review Panel. And the second item is accepting funding related to the Minnesota Board of Firefighter Training and Education reimbursement. This is under round seven, Training Reimbursement Program. Item three is authorizing a three-year contact with Lifetime Fitness to provide Health Club membership fitness services and facility use for police officers and firefighters. Item four is authorizing acceptance of a grant in the amount of $990,000 to go to our Department of Public Safety Urban Area Initiatives, or that's where the grant's coming from, Minnesota Department of Public Safety. And the final item is accepting a grant award of $32,500 from Homeland Security Emergency And I can stand for questions.
All right. We have next Transportation and Public Works. Councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. The committee will be forwarding 15 items for full council consideration. First item is a right-of-way and street use permit ordinance amendments regarding dumpsters and storage containers in the street right-of-way. Item two is the 2015 Uniform Assessment Rates, setting those rates. Item three is the Holiday Village, Minneapolis Holiday Market, for a large block event to operate outside the requirements set forth in ordinance. Item four is the variance request from MinDOT State Aid Rules for a project at 54th Street West. Item five is the Minneapolis Street Reconstruction Project, a series of actions to proceed with that project. Item six is the Nowada Boulevard Minneapolis Street Reconstruction Project, a series of actions to proceed with that project. Item seven is the critical parking area denial, and we deny the following request for critical parking area and adopting staff findings for the area referenced in the report. Item eight is the Metro Transit Sea Line Atrio BRT Project, and that's a resolution to support Metro Transit Sea Line Atrio Bus Rapid Project along Penn Avenue North. Following items refer to the Ways and Means Committee. Capital Project Closeouts, that's a series of projects that staff had identified for shifts—funding shifts moving forward. Item 10 is the 24th Street East Nellie and Avenue Street Reconstruction Project, a series of actions to proceed with that project. Item 11 is the 24th Street East Nellie and Avenue Street Lighting Project, and a series of actions to move forward with that. And item 12, the final—or not the final item, is the Tolts-King-Duvall Anderson Contract Amendment, authorizing extension of a master contract that was set to expire for parking ramps, skyway, and mechanical improvement projects. Item 13 is a street resurfacing special assessment appeal, and it's passage—a series of actions to address that appeal. Item 14 is the Niklet Central Modern Streetcar Project, and it's authorizing extension of the term of the master funding agreement with Metropolitan Council to December 31st, 2015. That'll just continue the work that they have in providing for us. And then the item 15 are two—single—one single bid of jeans, water, sewer, private water service valve relocate and disconnects and curb stop repairs, and the low bid for infrastructure technologies for small diameter sanitary sewer system cleaning. We'll be forwarding all those items, and I will stand for questions, Madam Vice President.
All right. Not seeing any questions. Next, we have Ways and Means, and Councilmember Quincy has asked me to give that report as he is on city business this morning. There are 14 items. The first is approving legal settlements. The second is authorizing professional codification services contract relating to the municipal code. Item three is a temporary staffing services contract. Item four is relating to restroom and locker room renovation. Item five is the Penn Avenue North Quarter Land Use Planning Activities Agreement with Hennepin County for the city's contribution regarding land use planning and other elements. Item number six is a public service center partial re-roofing bid. Item seven is the MinDOT lease agreement for rental of I-94 underbridge parking lots. Item eight is a facility sharing agreement with Hennepin County. Item number nine is a cellular tower lease. Item 10 is authorizing—let's see, how should I describe this? This is relating to the excess property at 40th Street West and France Avenue South. This is authorizing that elected officials acknowledge that the land is not needed for municipal operations and is formally designated as excess property per city ordinance. Item 11 is fire station number 27 driveway easement agreement. Item 12, leadership development contract to complete the facilitation and development of the new leadership development program conducted by HR. Item number 13 is approving a new appointed position, the Assistant Director of the Treasury. And item number 14 is tentative labor—is labor negotiations between the City of Minneapolis and the Public Works Engineers Association. And I'm not seeing questions there. Finally—oh, excuse me. Council President Johnson.
Just a curiosity, Madam Chair. On item 12, it looks like there's a—existing contract with employee strategies was $219,000, and the new contract will be a half million dollars. So according to the staff report—if you look at the staff report, there's a—I think according—there's a little bit of a difference. It looked like the existing contract was $280,000. It sounds like maybe it hasn't all been spent. But I just—I just want to point out that apparently the human resources budget can absorb about a $250,000 contract without—apparently any budget adjustment. Tells you there's a little fluff here and there. And I'm curious, did this come through as a—was it anticipated that this cost would be $500,000, or how was this framed? And I guess probably I should give Ms. Ferguson a call, but I'm just curious as to whether there'd been any discussion in committee about it.
So there was no discussion in committee. This came up as a consent item, so I don't know fully the answer to all of those items. I do know that this was a long planned-for item. This adding back this—they're calling—this is part of the Leadership U Program, which was a benefit program for employees for many, many years, and then was cut due to budget cuts. And so my understanding was that Ms. Ferguson, who has not asked for any increase to her budget this year, planned very carefully to be able to accommodate that in her budget. So again, I'll note she didn't ask for any increase this year so that she could cover a promised benefit to our employees.
I'll give her a call. Thank you.
And now we have zoning and planning with that committee's chair, Councilmember Bender.
Thank you, Madam Vice President. The Zoning and Planning Committee has one item to forward. This is amendment of our zoning code to allow for accessory dwelling units in the city of Minneapolis. There's been a lot of discussion about this. Happy to answer any questions. Happy to answer any questions, but we forward this item for Friday.
Not seeing any questions on that one. So with that, I believe that we have concluded with our business for today, and we are adjourned. Thank you very much. So what?